All right. Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Morrisville Town Council Work Session. It's November the first, the time is now 6:30 PM. I'm gonna turn it over to Todd Wright to take us through tonight's agenda.
Thank you Mayor. We're here tonight to talk about the Town Center project. And we have a lot of room to talk about, a lot of discussion we facilitate, but tonight's focus will be on the demonstration project. I'm sure none of you are like me in that you may have wondered if this project will ever come to fruition. I can say with reasonable confidence that we'll have the opportunity tonight to eliminate any of those concerns we've ever had before. So, we'll get an update from the Wake County and the library, their timeline, and some update on their question you asked about additional space. We'll go over the factors that are influencing this project, we'll talk about the timeline, some of the critical elements, and we will present to you a pathway that we can move the demonstration project forward. We'll attempt, as we go through the staff's updates, to identify decision points that you'll have the opportunity to make tonight or sort of discuss. And we're gonna, we're gonna get started tonight with Wake County. Jason Portman with Wake County Community Services is here, provide an update, Jason?
Right.
If you'll introduce any other staff in Wake County.
Thank you. Again, my name is Jason Portman, I'm with Wake County Community Purposes, a department that includes the Wake County Public Library. Joining me is Mike Waslick, he's the esteemed Wake County Public Library Director, and he can provide any clarifications or answer any questions about library operations for you. So, again, what I'd like to do is provide a little bit of an update on the library, and then also talk a little bit about the challenges that we see from constructing a facility, and then turning it over to Morrisville staff, so they can talk about ways they can address those challenges. The county is looking to build an 8,500 square foot library within the town center area. An 8,500 square foot facility generally we call a large community library. And libraries that are similar to that include Leesville, Holly Springs, and a library that we are preparing to open, Middle Creek, later this fiscal year. The, a programming room in particular is what was asked about at the September meeting of the Morrisville Town Council, and wanted to give an update on that. First of all, a programming room or a classroom will, the terminology that we tend to use is a programming room. That is not typically part of a large community library. There are two examples of large communities where we do have a programming room in place, but I want to stress that those programming rooms existed before we had a consolidated Wake County Public Library system. Two of those examples include Cary, which, that room is not configured, it's almost like a tiered amphitheater-style seating programming room. Because of the configuration, it's not really suitable to other programs that we may have to offer, so we don't make that available to the public. Another example is Richard B. Harrison. Richard B. Harrison was, is in East Raleigh on New Bern Avenue. That library was actually constructed by the city of Raleigh, again, prior to the consolidated Wake County Public Library system. And the meeting room they have there is more of a separate facility, but it's not necessarily, it's not very similar to what we would expect to see in Morrisville. For example, that room is used about two, or excuse me, about three to four times a day, but its average attendance per use is three. So, what we think is happening is that folks are going by, they see an empty room, they may be tutoring somebody, they may ask if they can use the room. We're marking that as a public meeting room use, and then recording the number of folks that are using that room. So, those are two examples, but those, again, those are outside the norm of what, what we're talking about. So, when we're considering a programming room, what we had to do first, because this is outside of our operations, we had to figure out how we might operate and facilitate that meeting room. And we decided to take the approach from the operational standpoint first. And there's a few things I'd like to share with you about how we envision a room, if it's built, how we would operate it. First, we understand that, based on the request, the space would be managed and operated by Wake County, the public libraries. Second, it would not require an outside entrance. So, keeping those things in mind, first of all, we would expect that the programming room operate within the library proper. So, it would, it would be open and available during normal business hours. So, a large community library is open nine to nine, Monday through Thursday, ten to six, Friday and Saturday, and is closed on Sunday. Next, let's see. I provided a graphic, I apologize, I provided this very late in the day, but I wanted to just give it a visual for you about during those normal business hours, when the room would be open and available. Because we would have the programming room be part of the library proper, we would expect to have, or we would like to have, first access to library programs if it is in the library. There's a couple reasons why we would have that, one, or would like to have that. One is, it eliminates potential user conflicts. And the, the best example I can think of is, if you ever go into a McDonald's restaurant that has a separate playground area, if the kids venture outside of that playground area into the other parts of the restaurant, they might get complaints. In a library, if we have a programming rooms identified, and we have programs going on within the library, it only makes sense if those programs are inside the programming room. If it is outside the programming room and the room is not in use, then there are times where the programs can get a little loud. And when they get loud, it can create some potential for conflict within the libraries. For those that come in and have a, an expectation for quiet study, or, or quiet is a relative term within some libraries. It also eliminates potential confusion about where programs are offered. If we have a dedicated space for a program, folks know the time, they know the location, and they know which part of the library to go to during operations. And so, for us, it just eliminates some of those, that confusion. So, what we did is, we took back and looked, a typical large community library has six programs, youth programs are offered during the week. Those are standard that we have for every libraries. However, we do give branch managers the option to have additional programs if the demand is there. And so, when I look at Morrisville and the demographics, the, the large number of families in this area, I expect, I would project that a Morrisville library would operate a little closer to a Leesville or a Holly Springs library, which they actually have eight youth programs during a week. So, when we look at the times in which the library is open, this graphic, there's not a lot of words on it, but Monday through Thursday, again, the library is open from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The areas that you see shaded in dark orange are typical times, Monday through Thursday, in which those youth programs will be offered. So, if the library has first pass at the programming room, the library, that programming room would not be available during those hours. For those areas that you see, the hashed orange areas, those are times in which we may have programs or may be setting up, and they may not, they may be available some days, Monday through Thursday, but there may be other days during the week in which the, it's reserved for a library program. So, I want to give you a sense that the times of the day, Monday through Thursday, in which it would, we would be assured that the room would be available to the public, tends to be in the afternoons, and then very late in the evening after 7:30. On Friday and Saturday, again, we open at 10:00 AM, we close at 6:00 PM. We tend to have family-oriented programs in the morning, and then when those programs are, are completed for the day, the programming room would be available for public use in the afternoons. Is, can I, is there, can I answer any questions about this so far? Yes?
Just in general, it sounds like you've, like this is a room that you guys would utilize, could be used. Now, you're saying this is normally not in the design, this programming room?
That is correct.
So, where do these events take place, your programs? Where do they normally take place if you don't have a programming room?
Typically, we have a corner within the youth section. We have, we tend to have all of our young child collections, school age, then it gets into the juvenile, the teen collections, and then into the adults. So, there's somewhat of a progression with how the collection is laid out. There, we tend to have the programs in a corner of the age in which it's, so, we have tables that are similar to the tables you have here, they can be moved and adjusted, we have furniture, some shelves that are on wheels or casters that can be unlocked and moved around, and librarians will go in and reconfigure the space for the programs, and then once that program is complete, they'll reconfigure it and make it available for folks that may just want to come and grab a chair or grab a table and sit down and tutor, read, or study.
But it sounds like, it sounds like the library could benefit from a room that could be a little quieter area?
Potentially. For us, we see value in having flexibility with the space. So, that's why we typically do not have a program room in an 8,500 square foot facility. Once we get to a regional library, the, if you were to look at this graphic and the times in which programs are offered, we pretty much have programs going on pretty continuously. There's still gaps, or not gaps, but there's times in the afternoon, but what you would see is the evening times, they would be mostly blocked off.
So, looking at the timeframe, so, removing the tables, adjusting the tables back, is it more man-hours for you guys doing that work than having a room versus every day putting the tables back and readjusting the tables? Which is a better option for you?
Mike, if you want to jump in on here at any time, this, I think Mike may have a better perspective, but I'll take a first pass at it. In the end, I think this would end up being a wash. So, there's still setup that staff needs to do on, in managing and setting up a programming room. But if we did have that programming room, there would still be management of that room. And we did sit back and kind of take a pass at how much we think the operations of the room would be. The, it's not insurmountable that, but in the end, I, I suspect that it'll be a wash. There's not that much of a, of a staff time savings by having that separate room, but in any savings that we do have would probably be spent talking to folks on the phone, setting up reservations, coordinating those folks that are coming into and using that programming room, because there is some facilitation that goes along with outside groups coming in. And so, I don't necessarily see a savings from a staff time.
That's a good point. Then, is it, let me ask the other question then. By having, not having the room and doing a makeshift that you're saying, adjusting, does that add more value by adding more tables and adding, because I go to West Cary, that's pretty much tutoring playground, because teachers come, they tutor, and there's hardly any table. So, will that pretty much become this, the same style, or by having this room, you won't have that because this table, this room is dedicated, no one can, it's, you're taking the space away, that no one can be able to use that?
What I would say is, what I suspect how the library would operate is, if we had a programming room, it would not necessarily be used as a quiet study room. So, we may have additional tables in there, but if the program's not, if the room is not being used for a library program and has not been reserved, chances are, we'll probably keep the doors shut, and, and that would be separate and available for use, but not necessarily by individual patrons coming in, needing a space to do tutoring or an individual quiet study.
If it's, if it's, no, if it's, if it's additional space, additional to the 8,500, then it's, there's like some bonuses for the staff and the things that we have to deal with. If it's carved out within the 8,500 square feet and it's not additional, because of the lack of flexibility, if you have a room, then you actually probably would lose tables. And the reason I say that is, if somebody reserves the room, if, then they would get whatever tables or whatever in there, as we see at Harrison, if there's three people in there, they would have the entire room and they would have it booked. And so, one of the issues we're running into in some of the regionals right now are people that are trying to use these rooms for some of their, you know, conduct their own business or whatever, and they're trying to stay in there all day. And so, the rooms themselves, it, it actually gives us more flexibility and easier use. If there's no rooms and every table and chair is out on the public floor, then it is first come, first served, you can stay there, whatever, but it can't be used for private kind of business transactions or so on. So, it's a little, I mean, I'm trying to, it is a staff savings, the staff, I guess, not savings, the benefit for the staff would be if it's additional space and you could do a program sort of off the floor and increase the quietness in the building. If it comes within our 8,500 square foot, then there's probably less benefit to the staff and even to the public because your space is now kind of carved up and someone could reserve whatever space and not let somebody else in it. That's, that's the best way I can describe it.
So, without the room, without the room, you, could you still do programming, are you saying? I mean, are you?
Yes. We would still do programming without having rooms. We would, we would, we would carve out some space within the overall footprint of the library main floor and to do programmings, but then reassemble that space whenever the program stops.
And what's the range of programming? Is it basically just book readings, youth programs? I mean, just?
The standard offerings that I would expect in a library in Morrisville would be about six young child programs. So, these are toddler, preschool age, some family story times. We would do two school-age programs in a week, and then we would also have what's called Teen Leadership Core. So, those would be the, the typical offerings we would see within the library. I will stress that, in a large community library, we do not have an adult librarian. And so, when it comes, we call it passive programming for adults, we don't have regular scheduled programs, but if there's a request for an adult program, and we have the staff and the ability at the time to coordinate that program, we will gladly do that.
Let's, I want to make sure, just open up to other people real quick for questions, give everyone a chance to at least ask the first one. Liz and Ricky?
So, Jason, just to go back, did you, did you say that you anticipate that the, the library would have first use of this room?
That is correct.
Okay, so, based on this sheet that you've given us, I mean, it only looks like the town would have use for three and a half hours in the middle of the day, maybe one and a half hours at night, Monday through Thursday, and then on Saturday for maybe five and a half hours. And that's even questionable, am I right?
Well, what I would say is that the areas that you see on the clock that are white, we, it is unlikely that the library will schedule a program during those hours. The areas where you see where the, it's orange hash, may mean like on a Monday through Thursday, we may reserve the room two to, two nights, two of four nights during the week, but it would be available for use on those days in which the library is not offering a program there.
But again, you're anticipating that you all would have the first dibs on programming, so?
That is correct.
And I will tell you, you're right, our demographic, we have families with young children, so I think you are, take earlier, the potential that you would program this probably every night of the week is, I would, I would suggest you probably going to do that and on Saturday too, quite frankly. So, I'm not sure how much use the town would have then of the room.
And, and for us, that's part of the, the decision-making process. If, if we want to be honest and, and very upfront with what we see the potential use for the town is, and that's part of the value of the money that may be invested within the space that you all have to take into consideration.
Yeah, and not to say that we won't, we won't maybe in the end choose to help enhance the programming in the library, but as far as for our own use for other programming, I, I question how much time we would have, but that's, yeah, and no good answer to that right now, sorry.
Okay. So, I want to turn this around a little bit, and we're all thinking about what's in it for the town of Morrisville as far as programming goes. I like to look at this as, what is the benefit of having a classroom for the residents of Morrisville? If we have a classroom that dedicates programs, it would reduce some noise, there would be value for our residents and patrons to have that flexible space, and it would benefit the library as well to have dedicated spaces so they wouldn't have to reconfigure. I look at this less as, how much time is there for the town of Morrisville to, to reserve versus what kind of library does the town of Morrisville need? We have a lot of young families, we have a lot of people focused on study, so I absolutely think that we're going to have a lot of tutoring going on in this library. I want to have the programming in a way that people can enjoy it, and I, I am sensitive to noise and cross, cross noise, if you will, with people in those. So, I, I see this classroom not as, oh, we only have four hours a day. I see it as, this is going to benefit our residents by allowing them to have dedicated space and dedicated programming, and this is the kind of library that Morrisville would benefit from. So, that's my perspective.
Yeah, I guess I just, I don't know that I heard the same, I don't know if I got the same thing from the library's standpoint that you just inferred, and that is, I, I think they, they'd prefer the flexibility of their existing setup, and the benefit, as we heard, was instead of just three people going in and commandeering the whole room for hours, they don't necess, they can't necessarily do that in the current situation where it's a corner of a room or?
Right. So, I see the classroom as a benefit to the library, that they can program even more because the demand will be even higher if they have a budget and staff and so forth.
I guess I'd leave that decision up to the library to, if, if, if we weren't asking for this space, what would the library do on their own? It sounds like they would probably just do what they, the normal flexible space without a room, is what, is what I think I heard.
When it comes to planning libraries, we identified, again, an 8,500 square foot facility. And, and when we look at how we program out the space, we see more value in not having that program room or classroom for that 8,000 square foot, 8,500 square foot facility, because there, we see more flexibility with being able to, with the furniture that we buy, being able to repurpose the, the space that was used for a program for other library uses when a program's not in that place. I, I believe the point that the councilwoman is, is making is that if this is space added to what we typically have in an 8,500 square foot facility, we certainly see value in that too. However, we're bound by a certain threshold that we can spend on a library project, and to go above what we typically do in 8,000 square, 8,500 square foot facility, I don't necessarily know if the town or if the county can pick up the full cost of that, and...
So, let's, let's go down, Michael, then TJ, and then Steve. Your thoughts, Michael?
What size room are we talking about, a 12 by 12, 14 by 14?
That's to be determined.
What's your regional one that, or where you've done it elsewhere? I've been in Cary one, Cary's, I lived in Cary, I, I valued those programs, I, the noise, I think, was helpful to have it inside that kind of area, because I agree with the councilmember Scroggins-Johnson that I think, I mean, if you're telling us that we're going to get programming, you're going, you're going to get eight hours of program in a day, it looks like roughly, and you're going to do this outside, I, you know, I think a library people are, I'd rather have a classroom where you could do that in, to be honest. And then I add the extra value of citizens, I've never envisioned the town running programs out of there, at least not in this concept. I just envisioned somebody being able to come up and HOA and say, "Let's have our meeting here, because we don't have space at whatever."
Clubhouse, yeah.
Yeah. A group of kids saying, "Let's go here, we're going to, you know, group study," high school kids or whatever. And when you call it a wash, that's how I kind of look at it, but down the road, I think this might be better for our needs, because again, we're offering more value, I think, to our, our residents that they could, there is a place they can go to. Our seniors can go and spend an hour at night, maybe, I don't know, play card games if they wanted.
That was it. Is there any thoughts?
I was just wondering, how much do we sort of use Cedar Fork for this purpose now? I mean, we have classrooms over there. It seems like?
Cedar Fork charges a fee, the library doesn't, so, just keep that in mind.
Okay, so, we rent out the rooms at Cedar Fork? Okay. Because it seems like that's sort of pretty similar to this. I mean, if someone really wants the space, they can just go over to West Regional, and they have lots of little rooms that are free, plus the programming room, which I don't know if that would ever be, has that ever led out to groups?
There's a meeting room?
A large one where they have the dogs?
It's an adult programming room, if there's not an adult program going on, then it's available for a meeting. So, it's usually, though I think the order is library, then other county agencies if they would ever use it, and then the public.
And what I would say is that the number of youth programs that are offered at a regional, the gaps in which it would be available for public use are just somewhat erratic and are very difficult to plan around.
Right. I just like, I'm trying to get my mind around how this really adds value, having a room in the library. I think if we had our own dedicated space for Morrisville, I think that would add value, because then we could use it for our own programming and it would be a dedicated space. If, like Mike said, we're just trying to provide this for our residents, that's what the county does. We don't need to interject ourselves into that, but if we want our own programming space, we should have our own programming space and augment the library with our own separate entrance. I think that's where we can add value to this. And although it may be a little more expensive than we'd like, it would meet a need that the space, the staff came back and told us that we do need the space, and we could have dedicated programming for seniors, for teens, and it would fill that gap until we actually have the community center anchoring the other end of the town center. So, we've sort of already passed that point maybe, but it still seems to me that that's where we can add value with this partnership.
Steve, any thoughts or comments before you want to say something?
I, I think that if we're going to have extra space, I'd rather be for programming for the town rather than just having a, having a classroom, because I do think we have a lack of spa, lack of space for it. So, I mean, it really comes down to, you know, how much more cost and investment we're willing to make to have extra dedicated space beyond the 8,500 square feet. And we don't, I wish we could start just with the 8,500 base, with no classroom, and then get that thing going, given the, the resources that we would have to find to, I know we're going to talk about funding later, but that's what my preference would be. I don't want to?
So, I need to clarify, I'm not asking for more space than 8,500, I'm asking for a classroom within the 8,500 footprint. And the discussion is going in a different spot, so I want to pull you back to hear what I was saying, that we need a classroom to reduce noise within the 8,500 square foot footprint, so just?
Yeah, so, I would rather have, to answer your question, I would rather have a classroom that would be used for the purpose of offering programming for, you know, Morrisville citizens as well. It's just based for seniors and programs like that that we don't currently have.
If I can add something, so, if we are, are bound to the 8,500 square feet, and we're going to carve out a section of that footprint for a meeting room, we would have to go back and look at our typical program of, of space and identify what things we would cut out. And... would cut out. And right now, I can tell you that what we would most likely exclude from a typical 8,500 would be collection space. So if we were to identify within that 8,500 square foot meeting space, Morrisville would likely have a smaller collection than what we typically have in an 8,500 square foot branch. The order of magnitude, we don't know yet until we determine the size of that room and how much of the footprint of the collection we would have to exclude.
It, it's interesting, the Cary example that you do, is a open room. There's shelving in there. It's my mother.
Hillary, a collection of cell phones.
Yes, thank you, yes, well, yeah. I'm being very careful. So that room-
It's not the kind of room that we're talking about. I think it's a place that kind of, actually, what we're trying to design is that kind of dedicated programming space in an open environment that still allows the flexibility and the access in and out, and it is, as Jason said, it's not space that's ever can be booked because it's wide open, other than there's a couple of walls, so it's, it seems sectioned off. I agree, I, I think if you're talking about additional space, then there's all kind of ways you can figure. You're talking about taking some space out of our 85. I think what you said is, would be our preference, is we like the wide open kind of floor plan that we currently have, and we try to manage the noise as best we can within that space. Jason's also right in that we have to take some of the 8,500 and make it into a, a room, you know, a program room that's closed off, then we'll probably lose something, because we don't typically do that. And walls and doors and access in there always take up more space, and we could make it, that could be where your casual seating was or anything, because if someone was using it at any time, then there wouldn't be any seating or tables for others. So it would more than likely be, as Jason said, shelving, arguing that maybe sacrifice, which means your collection's smaller, and those kind of things, which, again, we've talked, I, I think the other thing to kind of bring back to this is, because you have a large regional library close by, what we're trying to do is make this library as attractive as we can to the citizens, as convenient, whatever. One of the things that they'll want is collection. They'll want to come pick up their books and so on. If they have to put a book on hold, and it's a couple of West Regional, then maybe more than likely just go to West Regional and not use the library as much. So we're trying to work, work that balance with all of them, in that you have some active programming, you also have enough space for collection, casual seating, some study tables, and so on. As Jason said, with that schedule, the tutoring tends to be after school, which is why you see it wide, and it's to be less in the evenings, Saturday afternoons. We try to balance it from what our customers have used to when they prefer the programming.
So Tisha had a follow-up question?
Yeah. I, I like, I'm, I'm going, I'm trying to understand, like, I look at this chart. This 8,500 is purely coming from their country. We are not putting anything in it, so by asking us, what is their program, is not correct, is because it's their thing to us. Yes, we have, but is their program? Yeah, yeah, we can ask, but is their programming, that they have experience with it, okay? If we want, like, if we are so much passionate in adding a room, then it is a different thing. Do we add more than like a 500, 12 by 12, or 15 by 15 additional to influence, to take out of the chart? That's a different conversation, that we have an influence to it. Or, or do we at the time still have a say that, okay, this is an additional room? Do we have a say in first step, since it's a dedicated room? But that's something, I'll leave it, but at the same time, I like what TJ said, is, West Regional is very close by. If anyone wants, it's just a mile. Morrisville is so close by. They can go have their meetings there, you know, like HRA. It's, they don't have to, you know, come here. They can always, it's, they can go and have their meetings and do whatever they want. We don't need to spend this amount for that. We can have it for best use, to have more programming, which is good in a different way. So, so it, it's a different thought process. What do we want, you know, like, someone, it has to be for the better good of something that the library runs, that they can do it, or something for our community needs, or like, if they want to pay, HRA has it, if they want to pay, they can pay, you know, 20 bucks or 30 bucks to have a meeting.
I don't see this as an HOA versus non-HOA issue. I see it as a value of young families that have young children, that want to have more programming and opportunities and learning, and having closed spaces does allow for different types of programming to be enjoyed.
Yeah, if they want additional space.
We have so many communities coming online. This is our downtown. It's going to be a dense area. To say, go park somewhere else-
But my only worry-
I disagree.
My only worry is, if we shrink on the space, then people should not say, okay, this is too crowded. Just walk away from it and go to open space. That, that's the other thing, because it's 87, when they start comparing, West Regional is a small library.
I work in open space all day, and I tell you, it's nice to have a closed room. And, and I work in it every day. It, it's, it's something that is underappreciated.
So just to back up just a minute, because I, I kind of, I took this conversation in a different light. I thought we were talking about addition, in addition to the 8,500 square feet, that we would help put on this extra room. So I appreciate the clarification. I think if we're talking about how to configure the 8,500 square feet that's in existence, I, I want to let you all-
Yeah, that's-
Program it the way you want to program it and, and arrange it that, that, in the way that is, that you see the most successful in, in your history of building libraries and the programming and the, and the use of the libraries. I would, I would kind of want to lean more toward your experience, and, and I think what I heard was you like the open concept and, and the flexibility in that way. And I'm not sure I'm really thrilled about this. We'll have to limit the collection. I think it's going to be a small enough library as it is. I mean, a good sized library, 8,500's not insignificant, but I don't think I would want to reduce the collection more than that. Just my two cents.
Jason, do you want to?
So let me, just two other quick notes about operations. If the, the county is going to manage the facility, there's a couple of things. One is, we would use the county's policy for meeting rooms that we typically have at other libraries. We would not have, allow groups to bring in food or drink into the programming room. That's more of keeping those finishes of the space as pristine as possible for as long as- Also have some potential restrictions on the type of equipment that could be used. The example that Mike was sharing with me before is, we had a group that reserved a programming room, and they brought in sewing machines, multiple sewing machines, and they were going to do a sewing program. So they plugged in all the sewing machines, they all start going, and it blows out all the breakers within the library. So those are the types of things that we want to re, limit as much as possible-
There's a new clause in your statement.
There actually is now. Who thought they were going to say that?
So the equipment that would be used would be typical of a meeting room, not necessarily bringing in equipment such as that. So the other approach that we took on this is from a capital standpoint, and where, whether or not there was flexibility with that 8,000 square foot, do we stay within the 8,000, do we go a little bit larger? That's a harder question for us to answer right now until we get into the design of the library. So it may not just, say, if we do add on 8,000, from the 8,500, we are fairly certain that there would be some occupancy issues, and then it's not necessarily just adding on the space, but it's also enlarging what we would typically do for the restrooms or for the mechanical within the space. So there would be some, some cost impacts that just go beyond the four walls of that meeting room, and we would have to figure those things out later on.
One question, Jason. Are there any restrictions on how far out you could secure the space?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Because we would operate it within the county policy, what we do is, for public use, we limit the reservation to 30 days prior to the event. And what that does is allows as many different people to use the programming room as possible. So if there is a certain club or a group that wants to use the library, they don't lock that library programming room down on the second Tuesday of every, every month. And so by keeping that window for reservations at 30 days, it makes it available to any club or group that may want to use the library space on that second Tuesday.
So the first decision point for tonight's discussion is, based on the update we've heard from Wayne County, do we want them to continue pursuing the space request? And if we do, then we need to clarify, is this within 8,500 square feet, or is this additional space? And the other option is, if you've heard of information saying, you know, thank you for considering this request, but, you know, we'll try to look at other ways to meet our spacing. So I think that's our first decision point that we'll bring back up at the end of our staff presentations.
Could I clarify the 30 days out? What if a town wanted to program, like, for an hour every afternoon? Would we be able to lock it for a year? Or would that also not be available? Because that really eliminates town programming ability in this space.
Well, I, I'm sure we'd be able to work with you on that somehow. This is, keep in mind, again, this is outside the norm of what we typically do. This is, we'd be breaking new ground. We're not opposed to doing that, but, yeah, we, that's a situation that we haven't talked about directly with library administration.
So we'll, we'll come back to this later. I just, just some additional thoughts, and then we'll move on. I think, you know, you, you look at this clock and all the different uses of it and the available space and the areas that are, may or may not be available. I think if the library, when the library is built and it's successful, I think you'll see this clock probably build up a little bit. It sounds like there's still opportunity for the town ahead of time. If we thought about it, we need the space for something, we can, we can get it, you know, you know, within, there's very little solid orange on that clock. So I think the space would be available if we thought ahead and planned things, but I think, I want the library to be successful. You guys are in the business. You know what you're doing with programming and how to use the space. If that clock was totally full with stuff, that's, that's actually, that's fine for Morrisville. Those are Morrisville residents with a full complement of programs. It's, it's, it's not like we're bussing people in from out of state to use this library. These are our citizens using it. So when that clock is full, that's, that means our citizens, you know, have, you know, have those opportunities. So I don't, I'm more inclined to let you guys build your 8,500, go for it, build the best thing you can, and it sounds like we'll be able to get space if we need it, when we need it. And we also have other opportunities, and not only in the rest of downtown, but there are a number of other town facilities that are probably underutilized, if you really think about it. So I'm more inclined to let you guys, this is your business, you know what you're doing, let you, let you guys do what you think is the best use of it. But we'll, we'll come back later on tonight and try to make a decision on that. Todd, what's the next subject?
So obviously, the library project is driving the supporting projects in terms of the timeline. So now we're going to ask Rich Capola to give us an update on some supporting projects in your town. You can come here or-
Thank you.
You need to call back your mother.
Tell him we all say hi.
I can't, what, 58?
She calls me about five times a day.
All right.
All righty.
Rich, welcome.
Apologize, I have the screen in my back, so I forget to change the slide, or you can just let me know. So Jason just kind of laid out, obviously, where they're at in terms of figuring out the footprint of the building. One of the main steps or pieces of information they're going to need to advance that design, though, is to know exactly what the property boundary is in which that building will lie. Currently, we've identified kind of the block within the DFI sketch where it would go, but in order for them to stay on their schedule, we need to actually set the boundary lines, which effectively is set by the street design. So for their desired timeframe of February of 2017, we need a bit of an aggressive approach to try to deliver that to them. So that includes getting the roundabout and Carolina Street extension designed, addressing the gas line, which is currently running through that block, and determining what, if any, redesign or relocation is required, as well as finding a place for the stormwater for that entire block, as well as, you may recall, there was a previous agreement with the Church Street Towns for the town to provide a regional stormwater facility. So in order for us to try to meet that February timeframe, kind of laid out here the initial next steps that need to occur. For any engineering design, we need to do a request for qualifications. That has to be advertised, reviewed, basically scored, and a firm selected. At that point, we can then negotiate a contract with that firm, and hopefully, if that all goes smoothly, you know, in six to, I guess, we've got six to seven weeks from the go, from, from the point we can put that out, we can hopefully begin releasing engineers to go ahead and, excuse me, surveyors to start surveying the property and let the engineers begin preliminary design. You know, this is a bit of an aggressive schedule at this point, so there is, you know, it is kind of time sensitive, particularly to try to meet that, that February of 2017 target date.
Can I ask you a clarifying question? Just a minute ago, you mentioned Church Street Towns stormwater. Refresh me on that one. What's that, what does that, what does that mean?
There, there is an agreement that predates me, that basically, when that Church Street Town development went in, there was a certain amount of money allocated to the town with an agreement that at, at some point when the-
At Jeremiah Street, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the town, exactly.
We don't call it that very often. Jeremiah Street?
Yes, Jer, the Jeremiah Street, the townhomes along Jeremiah Street were built with the expectation that the town was going to fulfill the stormwater requirements with our property, or with the development of our property. So that is an announcement and agreement that we've been trying to make whole. So under this scenario, again, we have roadway design, we have land survey, roadway design, stormwater design essentially required. There may be some local gas line relocation in order to fit their building and the parking necessary on the property. We're still looking into other options with that as well, but initial estimates would be approximately $500,000 to go ahead and move that design forward. There is fund balance available for appropriation, for that work to start now, and so that would additionally, once we have those roads set, that would be able to feed back into the DFI's concept to verify the footprints of the buildings and available land for the concept plan and/or the greater plan as well.
Is this designed just for the concept plan, or is this designed for the entire 25 acres?
This design is actually only for the extension of Carolina Street to Town Hall Drive, the design for the roundabout, and the design for stormwater to facilitate-
So it's not, it's not outside of that immediate-
The demonstration project area.
Okay, all right, all right.
Couple complicating factors with deciding the library. So in previous concepts, the, you know, one of the solutions that was identified for both the stormwater and gas line relocation was placing both of those facilities along the portions of the Stottlemyre property, which would be dedicated to the town once the rezoning is in or was approved. If you recall, as part of that rezoning condition, everything between the stream and Town Hall Drive essentially is to be dedicated to the town at some point in the future. Currently, the gas line company, we've had discussions with them about where the- Uh, currently, the gas line company, we've had discussions with them about where the gas line could go, um, to meet their needs. You know, obviously with us potentially having a developed urban area, the more, you know, kind of out in the country they can be, the preferred they would be for their facility. So, uh, they've kind of taken the preferred route of running it kind of parallel to the sto-, uh, excuse me, the sanitary line that's currently running through the Stottlemyre property along the Greenway essentially, if you're, uh, familiar with that, uh, storm, sanitary line. Uh, additionally, we have an existing stormwater wetland that is right there where the Greenway attaches to Town Hall Drive. Um, low hanging fruit from a stormwater design would be to extend or expand that facility along Town Hall between, or between Town Hall and the Greenway on, onto that property that is currently, uh, part of the Stottlemyre piece. Obviously, the condition of that Stottlemyre rezoning, uh, we will not know until February or March whether or not we get, um, Campo lap funding for the Morrisville Carpenter Road project. Should that occur, uh, the likelihood of that property being developed and the town having access to that property in the fu-, you know, in the near future is much greater. For some reason, if we unfortunately do not get funding, I believe the condition then reverts that property back to the underlying zoning that it was previously. Therefore, they would have no obligation to dedicate that land, so we would have to look into other options or potentially purchasing the land that we need from them. So there is a bit of a, um, risk within that. However, in the interest of time, you know, moving forward, uh, with looking into those designs, knowing that it will take us several months just to get the land survey and everything back, um, that's stuff that doesn't go bad. Uh, so the investment there in terms of environmental and topographic work and all that certainly wouldn't, um, be money lost if for some reason February or March came around and we didn't get the funding and we had to look at what are other options were at that point. So additionally with the gas line relocation, currently PSNC's schedule was to replace that line in place. Uh, essentially, it's a six-inch line and they were planning on, uh, replacing with a twelve-inch line in the same footprint of the easement that they currently have. Um, that was so scheduled for two thousand nineteen. Uh, staff has had several conversations with them regarding relocating that line, uh, since they were already doing it anyway, if we could find a better place for it that doesn't interfere with the DFI concept. Um, and they are open to it. However, again, their, their funds were available, aren't available until two thousand nineteen. So any opportunity to expedite that will require some additional conversations with, uh, senior management with PSNC. If necessary, certainly, we can look at, uh, options for placing, at least at this point, placing the library in a, you know, location that doesn't interfere with the line as it exists now. Um, those are things that we've kind of taken as a fallback plan, uh, understanding that some of these other conversations need to occur.
Quick question. Do we have a, do we have any idea what the cost would be for purchasing the land?
Purchasing the land, I have not.
Okay, I was just curious.
Any discussions on that one? So with the library, uh, just some opportunities or options that staff has at least identified as well as discuss, discussions with the library folks. Uh, the orientation of the building, uh, currently, I believe the DFI concept plan does have it sort of oriented with facing, uh, the future roundabout and potentially, uh, expansion along Carolina Drive. Uh, if we were to reorient it and do the long portion of the building essentially along Town Hall Drive, there may be some potential there that we can stay outside of that footprint of the, uh, existing PSNC easement and still allow them to move forward. Another option that is, I think the less desired option certainly from a library standpoint would be to flip the library to the Jeremiah Street corner. Uh, those boundary lines are already set. We know where they are. Uh, essentially, they can work from that, uh, known point or known corner into the future block. Uh, we would then have to obviously have DFI evaluate what kind of impact that does to their, um, pro forma and, and, and concept for, uh, for that block. Um, both are, both projects, uh, additionally, uh, basically the parking for both projects would be affected by the gas line not being relocated at, at this point, as well as it pretty much runs bisects that future block, um, between Town Hall and lovely Foxglove Lane. So with that, um, you know, the, the main thing here being, um, with the library's current schedule, that February two thousand seventeen kind of timeframe, to be able to deliver at least for them where that Carolina Street right-of-way line will be so that they can then work their way, uh, from there with designing the footprint of their building in, in order to meet all the requirements. Essentially, we, uh, kind of need to start as soon as possible with that process kind of, the, the RFQ process, negotiating contract, bringing somebody on board. Um, a lot of, a lot of firms are very busy right now. Um, survey work in a lot of cases is four to six weeks out just to get on somebody's schedule. And then it takes obviously time for them to actually perform the work and, uh, and deliver the, the, the raw data back to the office so the designers can actually get moving. So any potential to, to move those, those items forward, um, will certainly help us meet their schedule.
The main decision you need from us, sounds like pretty soon, if not this evening.
Well, that is the second decision point. Do you all feel comfortable with staff coming to you this month requesting appropriation? Five hundred thousand for design for the road, stormwater and gas line relocation. So that's the second decision point that we'll discuss.
We can talk about that right now while it's fresh. Is, uh, anyone have thoughts on that?
There doesn't seem to be an expiry date, you know, like some designs are not good after three or five years. So we should get it done and figure out, you know, what our options truly are. If there's any showstoppers, we might discover them through that process.
But my concern is, uh, the design, we do it, then does the design include all both options or just one option?
With regard to where the library could go, is that what you're saying? Essentially, it could be both options. Uh, the way it's going to have to work, that, that roundabout is going to have a specific spot that it's going to have to go, um, along that street. Mainly, uh, one of the other considerations, the Stottlemyre development, that parcel was supposed to tee into, well, is required to have a second entrance off Town Hall Drive. So the placement of that roundabout is sort of a fixed point. We also have Carolina Street extension or Carolina, which is already extended into the property a certain distance. So basically, when we connect point A and point B, the road kind of has to go where it needs to go. So in that scenario, whether the gas line's there or the gas line's not, i- it, it will form at least the right-of-way line that they can then build off of. Uh, the only difference there is, once we have some further discussions with the, with the, the gas line folks, we'll know whether or not that's going to be, whether or not the building can go along Carolina further or if we need to push more towards town, uh, the long part, the longer part of the building being along Town Hall Drive.
You, you put it in one slide that you had to talk to the high-ranking PNCS, but did you tell them that's Wake County guys who are doing the library? Because, uh, I, because they have equal stake, uh, at their schedule. Uh, will you guys be able to influence the sca?
Referring to the P, uh, PSNC, I can talk to our facility design and construction folks, but I don't know how much sway we would have.
They're cousins to the railroad.
We're prepared, we're prepared. We're prepared to have those conversations. We just don't want to have those conversations if you don't plan to move forward. So we're, we're sort of staged up to have those expedited conversations after this meeting.
And this is like, not move forward in what sense?
We have, we need that survey information irrespective, and that's the precursor to design work.
We need to make a decision. So, uh, just out of, any additional thoughts or concerns about giving staff the approval to come back to us in November with a request?
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Design funds?
Just to understand it, uh, because I see here, Wake County has a preference on where they want it situated. Uh, the gas pipeline can't go in before a certain date, two thousand nineteen, I believe.
That's when they're going to replace it.
Right, but if they want, if we want to move it forward, we're going to have to probably pay some more. I'm just trying to understand the moving parts. Would it be helpful to, I mean, I, I, we need to go forward. I just want to, don't want to get into a trap by, as the question was asked, are we limiting our options by saying it has to go this way when, um, would Wake County be willing to delay the site selection for two months? Would that help? I don't know if it would help.
What I would say is that we haven't started design yet. And so what is really needed for us to start the design is first having that hard edge. And then if we're talking about placing the library on a corner, having that second hard edge, and then knowing exactly where the pipeline may or may not be, um, starts to define the shape of the, the parcel, the land that we're going to be working with. Um, and, um, that affects the orientation. Those are all things that we can figure out starting in February. So, um, for us, we see, um, we're supportive of, of staff in that getting this information will help us start framing up what is the right orientation, um, of the building and what space may need to be required.
And everything we're presenting tonight is in an effort to be able to provide Wake County that information by February.
All right. All those in favor of, uh, asking staff to come back in a couple of weeks with a, uh, budget, uh, request or a, uh, appropriation request?
May I clarify? We could bring it back on Tuesday.
That's, that's November still.
Okay, November seventh?
Sure.
One week.
All, all those okay with that? Raise your hand, please. Okay, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor.
One other, uh, I want to push my luck here, but.
Shut up.
I'm okay with it, yeah, but, no, but, uh, we are a few process. There's no, there's no commitment obviously at that point. However, you know, there's a minimum amount of time we have to, you know, advertise and get people to get it in. Um, knowing that no money's spent other than staff time to put that document together, would it be okay to move forward this week, potentially getting that document put together for the design work so that we can just kind of start the clock on those and rather than wait?
A week.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think you know where we're headed with this. So if you do something and we don't know about it, I don't care.
What Rich is just clarifying is, is getting an RFQ out on the street gets people preparing that so that it, it just gets it back into him to start the review process earlier.
All right.
Rich, you bring me the mouse, please, or hand it to me.
In a concept on how much that roundabout would cost?
As much as a per.
Get that with the designers.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Okay, uh, this next slide here is intended to, uh, illustrate that the public and private investment will be done in coordination with each other. And Rich is already talking about obviously we want to start the design work on the, on the roads, on the gas line relocation and stormwater immediately. And, um, again, in an effort so we can coordinate the construction of that with the, uh, private investment. So you can see we appropriate some funds in fiscal year seventeen and then additional funds in eighteen and as well as you can see the, uh, parking, uh, deck project, which would start funding until eighteen, which is both design and some construction. Um, at this point, I'm, I'm going to turn it over to Eric Thomas to, to just say a few words, but I do want to mention a couple of points about DFI. With the financial modeling, they have completed their deliverables. A third decision point that we need to make is what role we want them to play in the town center. And it's really as simple as, do you want them to continue pursuing the full vision? Or would you like them to focus on just the land, the town curlys? So that's, that's a third decision point. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Eric. He wants to make any comments?
If, um, I guess I had a comment about this slide before we get started. There was, you have the gar-, parking garage under public investment, and I guess I would argue strongly that it doesn't necessarily, it shouldn't be there. Anyone building an apartment, building a Morrisville is going to build their own parking garage if that's what they have to do. So I'm not sure, um, why that's not over on the private section. And, you know, maybe if we want to have fifty spaces, we, we can pay for that, you know, pay them for that or something. But I, I just have heartburn having a, you know, a seven million dollar parking garage under public investment when normally I think we'd ask apartment building to, you know, you pay for your own parking.
I'm not sure we've really had that discussion as a council and agreed that it's a private only. I know we had.
I, I agree. I don't think it's public only either. I don't think that, that decision.
Right.
So maybe.
It could be gray.
Maybe it could be.
So, and, and I just encourage you not to concentrate on this. This is just an illustration of what DFI has presented to you already as a part of their concept model. Recognize parking is a conversation you want to have, which is why they're back to talk about that. But this was just illustrative of what council has been presented already.
All right, I guess my point on that, illustrations tend to take on their own life when they get repeated over and over and over, over the years. And suddenly this will be, even though we never talked about it really or voted on it, it will be, that, that's going to be it. So I, I guess I just want to, um, be on record as saying, I think the parking situation needs to, is, is fluid at this point, unsettled.
And I appreciate them drawing a diagram so that we can focus on it versus just, you know, being in a visual square with dotted lines. This is much help, you know, more helpful.
And I think that's what we're here tonight is, obviously, there were a lot of questions with the length and, and time of our presentation last week. We weren't able to answer all the questions that you all had regarding the financial model and the public investments that were to take place for each phase of the development. So that's what we're here tonight, um, to make sure that we can answer those questions, particularly talk about parking strategies. Um, in this demonstration project, what we're envisioning is obviously public uses, uh, library, potential town offices, potential town green across the street that could benefit from parking spaces for large events. So we're seeing it as a, you know, a public and privately used parking structure. And so that's sort of the, and we see this as, as the parking structure as a, as a, an asset that the town can have to also attract private investment into this area to start the town center development. So that's why we modeled it, the way we modeled it in the, in the financial pro forma.
Yeah, I, I, maybe if I could, just build on that a little bit. The, uh, the way we sort of come to the program as we started working with you all and trying to think about what's highest and best use and how do we create the vibrancy and everything that you're looking for, is we, we recognize that we're trying to attract as much private investment as possible so that the private sector can cover the cost of those infrastructure improvements. That includes parking, but it also includes streetscapes and sidewalks and lighting and all those other types of typically publicly owned infrastructure, um, that downtowns tend to have. And so what, what we were showing is even though you might own and control the public space, it's not necessarily that this is funds that are being paid for by the public necessarily. It could be paid for by the private sector through a public-private partnership type structure. So that's what we're sort of laying out here. Um, one of the things that we try to do is, is to make sure that you're sort of aware of what, how much sort of public investment you could afford based on the amount of private investment and the new incremental tax dollars that are going to be generated with that private investment.
I, I think we should also remember that the, under public investments, we've, we have invested already, there's land. I mean, there's, even if the private group came in, built everything themselves, there's still a huge amount that the public has contributed to the site, um, in addition to gas line relocation, stormwater and roads. So.
Yeah, we, we typically, when we're, when we're modeling it, we assume that the, the town is going to be selling the land to the private developer, um, at fair market value and, um, generating as a result, you know, new tax revenue. But we wouldn't have any expectation that the town would be contributing land as their investment. The way that, uh, local governments typically invest in public-private partnerships like this is, is that they would potentially sell land, but they might contribute by owning infrastructure that might support the private development.
In the, in the smaller towns that you've worked with, because I know that you've worked with Durham, you know, much larger cities, and a lot of these cities, the cities have invested, not, I mean, so like, you know, if it's a three hundred million dollar developer like Blue Devil investing it, you know, how much initially is the town normally investing compared to the total package? Because I think that's one problem we have is that we want to get something going, but we also don't want it to go, be so big that it might not be reali-, I know we're going to talk about funding later. So, but in the towns like Shalote or some of the other ones that you've worked with, um, how typically, or like Sawani, I know we've seen something from them in Georgia. I mean, it just, how, you know, was it like they invested a significant amount of money or to get?
Yeah, so typically what you see in an area that's getting. So typically what you see in an area that's getting redeveloped, the public sector's investment is about 10 to 15% of the private investment. That's sort of a rule of thumb that you wouldn't want to get beyond that. Now, in terms of thinking through like the phasing of, you know, when those investments happen, obviously you don't want to get too far ahead of the private sector, you don't want to make a bunch of public investments that are not going to lead to private investments. You want to make sure that that private investment happens simultaneously with the public investment.
And when those towns made those investments, did they already, did they have a partner at the table or was that investment something that happened before? Does it just depend? Because that certainly would make things easier if we knew that we had somebody that was at the table with us, that we knew, you know, that we were making an investment that, you know, I don't know if it's a question you can answer, but it was.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, we never recommend a town make public investments unless we know that we have a partner who's ready to do the private investment that goes with it. So in a case like this, this public-private partnership, what we're calling the demonstration project, you know, the town would demonstrate that they have an interest in owning public infrastructure that's associated with this project, whatever, but they're probably not going to make that final commitment in particular on like structured parking until we know that there's a private developer and that private developer is, is making commitments and they're going to start it. What we, what we did in some communities, and this is actually just happening now in Wilmington project, you might remember, we discussed, it's actually the private sector developer who's building the parking. And when the, when they're done building their private development, all their residential that's wrapping the parking and the residential that's above it and the retail, they're going to build the parking and then they're actually selling it to the town after it's done so that the town knows all the private investment has happened, the deck has been built and then the town is buying the infrastructure after it's over and they know that there's enough revenue generated from the new development to, to cover the debt service of the public investment.
And like, Mooresville is, I don't know if you have worked, you're only 10 square miles and out of which like, all our, like multifamily or apartments, less than half a mile, you know, we approved, outfit or down the street, we approved, house parking decks, that was part of what we approved. And here, you're asking us to do it as a public investment. It's kind of, it's just go down the street, just, you know, hardly quarter of a mile that did their parking deck. You go down to Park West, you know, we approved, we're in homes like with parking deck as part of the whole.
Yeah, to be clear, we're not asking that that be a public investment, we're, we're not here to advocate for.
So when we come here and then like you put 240 with 1.3 for a unit, you know, for parking spaces. So that's my thing is, if you're not having apartment complex, then, and then pitching for, putting for infrastructure, parking, then that's a better thing, okay, you're doing something for downtown than when especially you're using away 75% of the parking for someone who's going to be utilized and then asking us to pay, that's a hard bone by there itself, you know, that's something that as part of our ordinance that we basically UDO requirements, we say, this is your parking requirement, you have to do it and then telling them, hey, by the way, you know, we're paying for your parking. So, and that is, I'm having a very hard time to understanding, why are we getting into that model?
Yeah, well, just to be clear, we're, we're not advocating necessarily for you all to pay for the parking. What, what we're advocating for, we're actually not really advocating one way or the other. What we're presenting to you is, is what most towns do based on the fact that you all have a bunch of public interests that you're going to be asking of these developers. So in your most, in your, in a standard multifamily project, you probably don't require that 25% of their, or a significant percentage of their ground floor be retail because we're trying to create a, a ground floor retail, multi-mixed use environment, you know, downtown environment. You, in most private projects, you also don't have requirements that they provide enough parking to support other public uses like a library next door or like the farmer's market across the street and that sort of thing. So the idea in a downtown environment is that you're creating a public atmosphere where the parking is open to everybody in the community because there's going to be a mix of uses. You guys are going to want to dictate that there's, there's going to be enough mix of uses that it's going to be a vibrant area, not just at night when people come home to sleep, but during the day and in the mornings and on the weekends. And so you want there to be a really nice mix of uses that usually requires parking as one of the pieces of infrastructure to accommodate that. There's going to be sidewalks that you want people walking up and down. That's not typical of a private multifamily development project, you're not trying to get the public in and through private property. In this case, you want the property to be all public, you want the sidewalks to be public, you want the green spaces to be public, you want a mix, a good mix of uses that include public and private uses, but you want the infrastructure to be public so that everybody can take advantage of it.
Are you familiar with Hillsborough? Because you, like Steve mentioned before, you've worked with Durham and Wilmington and clearly those are much larger cities than we are. But I, Hillsborough is very similar to Mooresville, so, and I know they have a parking structure downtown. Are you familiar with their setup and how that was all, how that all came about? Because that's pretty new too, well, new is relative.
Yeah, it's relatively new, but it's, it's very similar. I mean, they have a mix of public and private uses, but they, they sort of saw it as an opportunity to get more private investment in their downtown and, and sort of more density. And so they have parking that can be, can accommodate both the library, but also private spaces like the Wellspring grocery store and some of the other restaurants and stuff like that because they did not have enough parking. Usually you see structured parking where you're trying to increase the density and, you know, obviously downtown Hillsborough is a really small area and that's the case that we sort of laid out here with this program is that we're trying to get enough private investment to help cover the cost of a lot of the public infrastructure and the, the public interest that, that you all had identified that you'd, you'd want to see addressed in a, in a downtown type environment.
Do they have multifamily doing that?
In downtown Hillsborough? They have, well, I don't know what, they don't have, they have, they don't have.
There's very little. It's, it's not like a, a project like the demonstration project that we're laying out. This is pretty typical of what we'd see even in similar sized towns, you know, across the state where you're trying to get more density than, you know, your, your typical either garden style apartments. You guys are fortunate here that your price points for your apartments are high enough that the private sector can cover the cost on their own for, if you were just asking them, if, if they were just building residential, then, then potentially they could cover the cost of structured parking. It's when you get these mix of public and private uses and then the requirements for having retail on the ground floor, you know, those types of things start to make the projects very more, much more challenging for the private sector to accommodate. That, that's why you don't see a lot of mixed use projects. If, if most developers would prefer just to have multifamily and not to have retail on the ground floor, for instance.
Courtney, Courtney, can I buy you for a clarification? I know we recently had an apartment, someone looking to build apartments, but it was required, was it required that they have retail? I'm just trying to clarify, for our, for our UDO, don't we have certain areas that require retail?
For, at the UDO as a general rule, no, there are no requirements for percentages or mix of integration. So for the community activity center in our comprehensive plan, it states that for sites that are redeveloped, that an integration of a mix of uses be encouraged and that multifamily should not be freestanding. There are not, in the UDO, there are no prescribed, reason being is it intersects less flexibility into a private development.
Michael, TJ, any thoughts?
Are we under the sort of the but for, they, they wouldn't be able to make this happen but for our public investment in this? I mean, because the idea is we want to have a vibrant space and that's the only way it's going to happen is by more public investment. I understand your point completely, that apartments should pay for their own parking, but we are asking them to provide extra parking for library and.
Well, library has their own parking, right? I mean, that's.
Maybe not enough.
Plan A, we would like the parking deck to be utilized for as much of the library parkage as possible. That would be Plan A. If for some reason we can't pull it off, then yes, the park, the library would have surface parking.
Okay.
And spaces at such a premium that it's important for us to go vertical with some of the parking and that's more expensive, but it would be a town asset going forward and it'd provide the demonstration and commitment to the project as a whole. This is the demonstration, this is our demonstration that we are really invested in this entire project. So I know it's a high price tag, but I think it's, these guys are the experts. If we want this to go forward, I think we trust their judgment.
Well, there are just, no, no bad feelings, but you guys aren't paying for it.
Yep.
Right, okay. This is the town, the taxpayers paying for this? I want to, you know, we, I don't want to lose track, we have, we have plenty of investment in this area. We're, we're, the, the public part of this is our, the, the ground, the roads, the gas line, the stormwater and the permission to build in our downtown. Those are all very, very valuable assets that we're contributing to this. I would argue that, I don't know that you have to, you know, and, and there's plenty of other things, you know, we just, we're signing a check for 500,000 here in a, you know, couple, in a week. I would argue that we've made substantial public investment in this and that we should, as much as we can, get the private side to pay for everything we possibly can get them to pay for.
Yeah, I've, I've been to a number of their presentations and their classes and that's their job, that's what they're trying to do and they're sort of letting us know that this is the route forward for us. They did mention that the land, that is a big investment that we've made, that we've put a lot into that and we're going to recoup that as we sell it to the developers. So there, there is a lot more investment that we're going to have to make to make this happen.
You know, you get the land free and give us, you know, the first two floors of the parking deck or a floor of the parking deck. I mean, there's got to be other ways to do it without cash out of our pocket, which I think we've got so many things.
Well, that's, that's what we're trying to say here is that we're, we're not recommending that there's any cash coming out of your general fund to fund any of this. Our, our goal is to try and minimize the amount of public investment and maximize the private investment so that the private sector is covering the cost of any publicly owned infrastructure.
So, so on that note then, explain to us what the RFQ would look like. What, I mean, maybe that's what's helpful here, we're, we're missing that whole point. We're not going to go out there and say, the town of Mooresville is building this big structure, what can you do? You're going to, you're going to tailor this RFQ so that.
We're, we're, well, hopefully you're going to tailor this RFQ so that it's to our benefit.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, the goal is to get, if the private, our goal is find private sector partners that want to build exactly what you all are looking for. And if it requires absolutely zero public investment, but they're going to give you the public parking and let you do whatever you want with it, then great, by all means, let's try and find as many developers who are willing to build public infrastructure as possible. In our RFQ, we're going to, it's going to be a competitive process and we're going to go out there and we say, here, here's what the program looks like, we expect, we've got property that's going to be sold at fair market value, this town does have that limitation. We think that this site can support this number of residential units, it'll be a range, it's not going to be an exact number, but a, a range. It's going to require this many parking spaces on this site, this parking has to be shared with a library that's going to be adjacent or adjoining in some way and we're going to make sure that there's enough parking for that public library to be accommodated there and we probably are going to want to require there going to be a retail component in there to make sure that it can support any future development down there to create this town center feeling. And so with that, we're looking at, you know, developers that come in who are interested in building that, we expect that the parking structure is, is going to be necessary to support all that private development and the, and the town is going to be selling the land and is open to participating in some kind of public-private partnership that allows the new tax increment to cover the cost of the infrastructure, but that the town is not going to be, is not expecting to spend any funds from general funds to cover the costs and whoever.
And I think that sounds reasonable, what you just laid out. Point of clarification, Todd, the library people here.
Jason's still here.
Oh. The, if, if the parking, the 75 spaces, if suddenly you didn't have to build that because we're getting a very big parking deck, is the, is there a credit or something, something that's an expense you guys don't have, maybe it's.
It's our classroom.
Is there a, is there a credit, I should say, for, for us to use it elsewhere?
Well, we, we have not had that type of situation before. Specifically, our developers have built the deck higher. We have gone into partnerships with municipal developers where, an example would be with the town of Cary, where they are developing some town property, supporting with a parking, structure parking facility. We are putting our costs that we would have put into a surface parking into the cost of the deck. It's a fraction of what the cost of the deck is, but we have, we have a grid like that over par with others to.
I would, I would imagine it is a fraction of surface for two parking lots. Yeah, okay, thank you. I think what you, how you described it is, to me, that sounds reasonable, what, what you just laid out.
Yeah, I mean, that's our, that's our goal is, we, we want the private sector to cover as much if not all of the cost as possible, even, even to the extent that they're covering the cost of the public infrastructure, all the sewer lines and all this develop, pre-development expenses that you guys are covering now, we would expect that development to cover at the end, end of the day. They're, they're buying this site from you all with the understanding that there's going to be some public use that's incorporated into it.
And, and getting some of these assets like the library and other things will only help that case, because I've been watching Cary very closely over the years and I was a little bit skeptical about their downtown revitalization. First, they started with a lot of still a mess out of Academy Street, a lot of work there, but then they slowly, they, what they did was they revitalized a lot of their core assets. So, you know, they had the art center, then they had different stores, then they had, you know, bottle shop, brewery, the Cary Theater. What made it different though is they already have those assets that existed and, you know, I'm curious as to when they made those investments, they didn't really have a lot of partners at the table, but I think now they're getting more people wanting to come in. I've never heard anything about parking, maybe that is something that's going on over there and I've heard arguments about more density, but the point is that, that's what makes this a little bit unique and challenging is that we don't have any existing core assets that we can revitalize. So I think it's critically important that we make it clear to any developer that we've already invested money in this and that we're making the investment to have a library, relocate farmer's market. But those kinds of things obviously help, right? In terms of just making the argument of how we embark on this partnership. We can't compare ourselves to Cary, they're a much larger town than us, but they've had some success, I've noticed, in terms of making some of the, they got a business improvement district, you've talked about that, Michael, those kinds of things, so.
Yeah, and they, they haven't been, they are getting to the point now where they're thinking about structured parking, they have a, they have a parking deck near their town hall, you're probably familiar with, but, you know, they're, they're also, they created that business improvement district so they could provide incentives that are similar to, so when they, when they got their, you know, their inn or boutique hotel downtown, they provided incentives to help make that happen. That's the, that's the equivalent of the type of structure that might work out in terms of a public-private partnership structure where you have, the, the private sector's making an investment and maybe you're giving them a, a grant to reflect some of those, those new tax increment dollars going back to them in order to make that project happen. But we would, the whole point of us putting together a detailed program on this site and sort of understanding what the cost is going to be from the private sector, we can understand how much value is being created and how much public infrastructure can be supported. We would certainly want to make sure that you guys are well aware of what type of public infrastructure you're going to be owning at the end of a public-private partnership like that.
I had a couple of things, okay. The timeline, so I feel very confident that the library's going to happen and the library might not be situated the way you guys want. And then what I've been waiting for, for years, for everybody, when this, Liz, you know, we had one hiccup before, we did a, we had a great plan, 10-year, nothing really happened. That's going to be gutted. I mean, that's a different issue with the UDO, but to allow 1,200 homes down here, apartments, I just don't see that we're going to allow that, but that would be a hurdle, but I'd be willing to, I mean, walk it through, so I was hoping we'd see more at the other end with the Greenway, possible Greenway and the Conservation District. Because I, I, I'm for you guys, I want to help, but at the same time, I'm kind of like some of them, I'm not going to pay for parking. I'll pay, I have, I floated an idea where we'd pay for a double parking. We'd take their 80 spaces and just double it and try and do. We'd take their 80 spaces and just double it, and try and do a parking deck that way to accommodate the things we're trying to accomplish here. But I just don't, I, I see your vision, but I just don't see it happening in the next few years. So, that's the, the tween period I'm looking at with the timeline. And I know you guys spent a lot of time and effort, but I was hoping we'd hear more about the Business Improvement District and Synthetic Tiff, and trying to do it that way. Because we've had trademark come here before and, and kind of offered the same thing. We had a plan before doing the same thing, and I'm, I'm not a big into the town, and I'm just one vote, I understand that. But for the town buying up property and then offering it to somebody, or renting it to them, and doing stuff like that, my concept would be to lay the groundwork like a table, put the fork and knife out, and then have the developer come and say, kind of like Park West Village, say, yeah, we'll come in and, and yeah, we'll build this, we'll build, you know, whatever apartments they want. But I don't think, I don't, vision seeing 1,200 apartments down here in the next few years or the next decade. But that's a zoning thing we're going to have to change, and so, I don't mean to ramble, but I, I'm working for, back to, I see the library happening. So, in 2019, you know, when it's completed, what, you know, I'd like, I'm looking for more concrete things, what we, we can do. You want to list it, a QRF, or?
RFQ.
RFQ, then that's, you know, that's fine. I mean, can you get that out in 2018, 2019, or?
Next year, aren't you?
The first half of 17.
It's been the beginning of 17.
I mean, the, the goal would be to tie that directly to the, to the library, and quickly, sort of, as the library is being designed, think about how it fits into a residential project with, with parking in the middle, so that you can share the parking between the, the public space and the, and the private space. So, we, we would go to, go to market and try and find a, a private sector developers who are interested in doing that project for you all, to demonstrate the fact that there's, there's market demand, that, that people like the larger concept that, that you all have, have decided you, you think makes sense in terms of having a town center feel and a mix of public and private uses. And so, I think that, you know, we're confident that if we go to market with this project, this demo, what we're calling the demonstration project, with the mix of residential, retail, and a library, with, with some structured parking on this site, that we will find private development partners that want to build that for you, and are willing to buy the land and, and allow that private investment, that new tax increment to cover the cost of the public infrastructure.
I have one more question, is like, assuming, I saw the slide, 540 parking lots and 240, assuming 312 parking lots, and the, the library is 75 parking, so that leaves with only 153 parking for the entire downtown. Will that be sufficient?
That is, that's one deck there in the demonstration project, so there is parking spread throughout the entire town center concept plan. So, it's not that this entire downtown, when it's fully built out, is satisfied with the one parking structure. So, we're envisioning with, with 1,200 residential units.
Not with 1,200, but just the, we are assuming only...
We have the demonstration area, which is in the red square. If, if, and when it expands, there's other parking elements that would be introduced. But just, we're trying to concentrate on, on the demonstration project, and getting, you know, getting that moving forward. So, with that as a question, you're saying that there's 153 spaces left, okay?
I'm not sure I'd worry about that right now.
I wouldn't.
I, I, here, I, I think what, what we just heard is, they're ready to go, if we're ready, they're ready to go out with an RFQ to find somebody, and they're confident they're going to find somebody to build the demonstration project, and in the end, we're going to come out better than whole. I'm, I'm, let's go, let's see, let's see who comes forward in early 17 in response to the RFQ. And if, I mean, nobody, you don't like it, we can say no. I mean, you know, I have a feeling we're going to get, they're confident we're going to get somebody to build it. So, I'm, I'm not sure why, we're not losing anything here. We're, we've got an opportunity to get, to get the development community involved and to help us with the demonstration project and get our town center started.
And another question for the library is...
I, I don't just, just so you know, Liz, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I, I too, I just, it's maybe getting into the weeds a little bit with, with, you know, who owns what and that sort of thing. But I think that will, you know, I assume you, we, we would see the RFQ, you know...
I mean, it's your RFQ, not ours.
We would see this and, you know...
Before it was submitted, to make sure...
Yeah, we're going to lay it all out in great detail in terms of this.
This is what we've been asking for a long time, is to, let's get this thing started. We've got the library a little better situated, and they're, you know, if, as far as who pays for what, I think that's still, that's still up in the air a little bit, but, I guess, let's concentrate on the demonstration project and questions, what's, what are the next steps? And let me ask you the guys that, what is, what is the next step? If we were like, yeah, let's, let's go ahead with the RFQ, what does that, what does that mean?
So, one of the decision points is, is to task them, do you want them to pursue the full town center vision? Or you want to limit them to just the town-owned property? So, that, that's one of the decision points. Again, pursuing the full town center vision does not commit you to doing anything, it just allows them to go to the market and with this demonstration project.
Yes, are, are we selling this demonstration project as the first piece of a much larger vision that you all have? Or are we going to the market saying, hey, this is the first piece, but it might also be the last piece? And so, it's, it's very different.
I don't know that you have to add that disclaimer.
Well, just because the decision today, we have to decide, is are we just going to focus on the town, the land that you all own? Are we, are we interested in selling this larger vision that we want to see it all developed over time? Getting to this point of like, the mix of uses, the 1,000 to 1,200 residential units over time, retail on the ground floor, and that sort of thing, which creates much more of a town center feel.
Why, why should that be a decision point tonight?
What was the question?
Why, why that should be a decision point tonight to go for an entire vision versus just this one?
Well, keep in, keep in mind that the financial modeling that was provided was based on an entire town center project. So, if we change that scope...
We are choosing it, they, they, we go one step at a time, and we have so many things. Like, my, my biggest concern is, you know, we don't have, where we are placing the library. We are still debating on the gas line.
I think the point Mike was making, when they go to the market, they need to explain the big picture. So, do they have permission to say that this demonstration project is part of a larger project? That'll be phased in later, or is this a...
I, I think it's hard to, I guess you could say that there could be additional plans, but we don't know, I mean, we haven't heard back about the Conservancy Group or anyone else. You know, what's, what's going to happen with the other 15 acres? I don't, I don't know that you could sell it as part of a bigger package, because we have no idea if that bigger package will ever happen. But on the reverse, you could also sell it as, you know, here's, here's a demonstration project, here are the overall plans that we aspire to one day.
Yeah, I was going to say, you're not going to be, they're not going to be real specific about, we want this here, that there. There, you're just talking about the, the overall general vision of this area, is that what?
Yeah, in the RF, in the RFQ, we would talk about this demonstration project fitting into a, a larger vision that the town has for itself and creating a town center atmosphere. And that's why this project would be probably more interesting to more developers if they knew that it was going to be a part of something larger, that it's going to have a mix of uses and, and other investments happening in the future.
I mean, we, we do have those plans, we have talked about it. I don't know, I mean, if we talk about it and it doesn't happen, is there, are we, is there a liability there for the town having sold something that didn't happen?
No, I...
We don't, we don't have control over the rest of it, we don't really know what's going to happen over the rest of it. To me, it's almost like zoning or something, you know, like a small area plan or something.
I think the, I think the decision...
It's public record that we don't have control.
Apartment there, and you guys promised to do the other 20 acres.
No, I'm, I'm not promising to buy the other 20 acres.
I guess, I think the decision point is, so there's a couple extra items in our scope of work that would, pursuing site acquisition strategy for the rest of the, so what we jumped forward with in terms of talking with other groups about acquiring other key pieces to the larger town center vision, that is really part of this next scope of work in our contract for deciding between town-owned property and this larger vision for the town center development. So, we're, we're trying to look at a decision, do we want to continue evaluating these larger, or these other partners for side, gaining site control, gaining, you know, acquisition of the key properties for the larger concept, or is it, do we want to focus just on the town-owned properties?
But if we, if we focus on the larger vision, I think, you know, are we, we're not obligating ourselves that we can, we can say we're for the vision, which could bring partners to the table, and then, and then decide we want to begin with phase one here and build upon that. So, it seemed to me that if we didn't focus on the vision, it may be harder to get takers for someone that's going to focus on just the 10 acres.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, I, I'd say, let's look at the vision, otherwise, we're just losing an opportunity. We may come back and say, it's going to be $100 million, $15 million, we don't know we can do this. But at least we'll have a partner at the table and we can figure out, right? I mean...
So, so let me, so, looking at that map, and forget, forget the, you know, what, what each building is, because that will change over time, for sure. But isn't that where we want our town center? Isn't that the vision of where we want our town center? Isn't that the overall, I thought we had already discussed this and decided that we, we need to go forward.
He's, he's talking about a bigger picture, saying like acquisition and like side acquisition.
That's not, that, that's down the road.
So, it's not as far down the road as you think. If you remember one of the earlier conversations, as soon as you activate the project, the value of other land you might want to secure could be impacted. And that was one of the conversations we had very early on. That's why the overall strategy is important to your discussion.
I don't know, I, I guess I would let the, let me clarify how I say this. I think the demonstration project is great. I think we should put an RFQ out for the demonstration project. If there happens to be this other stuff on the map that shows a vision that may happen one day, I think that's perfectly fine, too. We do own additional acreage outside of this, between that site and Church Street, and between that site and Town Hall, or outside the public safety buildings. So, I guess without committing the town to buying up 15 more acres or three more parking structures or anything, I think I'm okay with the RFQ on the demonstration site, and there's a map of a vision, that is, that's all it is. And, and I guess I'd want to see how this, this happens first before I said, yeah, go out and start acquiring anything else. I mean, I really want to see how this step works first, before we move forward.
My comment is not going to be based off of RFQs. It's going to be based off of visions and what we have in the plan. And I think the important thing is, is if you embrace this vision here, that vision can be incorporated into the town's plan, because there's a different vision map that was adopted there. You can take that, you can evaluate whether that's appropriate to fold that, to amend your map in there. And you can also take information from here to help draw any text amendments that we need. So, if private developer A comes over and says, I want to do this, we don't know that they've secured land, the town then has a framework to provide that person information to help develop this vision. So, I think there is an important element that can be folded in, that is going to look at potentially long-term and how will the things potentially happen, public, private, or otherwise. Securing that framework in such a way that if somebody came in and wanted to build where a entire green area is, if it's adopted, and our plans are required to dedicate it to us as part of their project. So, then there's some important information that can be incorporated.
And I will say that actually in Kannapolis, when we went out for, with the demonstration project, I don't know if you guys remember, but we're working on a large, creating a town center in, in downtown Kannapolis, town bought all their historic buildings and 50 acres of land, and we came up with a similar vision for them and are now turning it over to the private sector. We started with the demonstration project, it was very similar, structured parking deck, sort of surrounding, being wrapped by residential with retail on the ground floor on their sort of main street. And we went to the market, we had a developer come back and said, I, I love it, I love the big picture plan. Can we go ahead and do this one and the, and the block across the street? They actually offered to buy both from the city and, and start taking a larger piece of the city's vision and start putting it into action.
I haven't had a chance to make a comment yet. One of the things that I think is important is that we need to get an RFQ out there now, because the library project is ready to go. And if we don't get a viable project proposal, we don't have funding for a parking structure. So, at some point, we're going to have to decide, February, March, April, if we don't have a viable project, are we going to go with a flat lot for the library? It's very important that we don't derail the library progress with, you know, kind of iterating on a parking structure or not. So, that's, you know, I really want the library to get done.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree 100%, the library should be, it's, it's a railroad, it'll go material of this.
Exactly, so...
Any other thoughts? Todd, you talked about it, the engagement that we have with you guys. What have we currently signed up for as far as your deliverables? You mentioned it ends tonight or something, so what is...
No, there was, it was really an analysis of two scenarios. And what we talked a long time ago was if we could make town-owned property as phase one of a larger vision. We all talked, sort of, we had presented the town-owned property, what that could look like as a town center versus this larger scenario. There was sort of an agreement when we were showing the plans, we liked the larger vision for what the town center can be. So, there is a, a point in our contract at this, at coming up, where we've provided the deliverables, the financial analysis for the two scenarios, which end up being phase one versus the larger project. But at this point, if you all agree that you still like pursuing this larger vision for what your town center can be, we then focus on extra items in the contract to think through the phasing, attract private investors into these projects, think through a site acquisition strategy for the larger town center concept. So, it's really about having us stay on for attracting private investors into these projects.
So, this is an opportunity for you all to give us direction. Do you want us to just focus on the demonstration project and the town-owned property? Or do you want us to keep pushing towards the larger vision? And if we're pushing towards a larger vision, that gives us multiple priorities. It's focus on the demonstration project and try to think through and get more details to you all on the, the future private and public investments that might be required to execute on the larger vision.
You know, none of this, we haven't seen any results from an RFQ or anything else. To me, it's like, I'd like to see what happened, let's get the RFQ out there for the demonstration project. And, you know, we have a map, there's some other things that could happen if someone's interested, and see how that, you know, I'd like to see how that works, to be honest with you.
I don't think the agreement is that flexible, though.
Yeah, the issue is, is who is sort of acting as our agent and paying them to market the property. That's how DFI gets paid back, and that was the initial agreement upfront, is for the broader vision, there's more opportunity for us to get development and for them to recoup all the work they're putting into the effort. So, that's why council executed an agreement where we had a decision point we would need to make, and it affects not only what we pay for them, but these extra steps that they're talking about.
Okay, if, if no one comes to the table for the RFQ, I don't know that it'd be one of, why would we expand it to another bunch of acreage? You know, if, if the, if the demonstration project doesn't work, why would we necessarily...
And that's your choice, but it's, it's who then transacts the demonstration project for us.
I think in the past, sorry, in the past, we put these RFQs out and we didn't get any takers. So, I think...
We've never, we've never put an RFQ out.
We talked about an RFQ, but I mean, I, I think there is value of someone representing us and trying to find us those right partners, and rather than just saying we want to just do it to a matter of no. I just feel like we should leverage expertise if we can to just get, even if it's just a demonstration project, you know, with the vision. Let me, let me throw this out here, and I'm really stating this as a question, just for clarification, but if we ask DFI to continue with the larger vision from this point forward, their cost is, is provided by the development cost, not directly by the town. If we ask them to not focus on the large vision, but only the demonstration project, the town one, then we would provide a linked submission, 38,000 for the work we've done. So, having them do the visioning part...
So having them do the visioning part, there's no eye pocket for the town at this point. And based on the RFQ process, you may get information to say, go for no go.
I meant to say, the question here, for me, is not a question of money, and not the question of not doing a good job, or not doing, it is, obviously, you guys are doing a good job, and you got us to this point. The question here is, let's test the water, and obviously, is, let's give it time, and you have done the picture, it really talks for it, and we are not going away from our vision. The vision is there, and you have your talking points, we're not going away from our talking points. And if we want to, we want some hitters coming and giving us some, you know, something that, okay, we see something, come on, let's go more for it. That is what we are, I think, we all as a council are looking for, that's all we are looking. And that is the, I think that's what, I personally, I feel, everything looks good, whatever done till now. And it's not about undermining anything, we have come along, we're looking at the plans, and we have hurdles, you know, all the staff, especially, you know, the gas line and all that, if we are chucking down, you know, $500,000, every, just, you know, the council, we are just, okay, we are ready to put the money down. Every time, you know, the staff has come, we are approving it, we are not putting a block here anywhere. So it's just, we want to see something.
Well, I think we are all comfortable with the demonstration project, and we like that to move forward, and we have good momentum going forward, and to sort of essentially put the entire vision on hold for months, we're sort of losing momentum, and it shows a lack of.
What is a hold?
Well, if we're trying to just, okay, we're just waiting till, see if a good RFQ comes back, then they're not.
That's what the demonstration project is about. It's demonstrating whether it works or not.
Right, and.
And so why would we do the whole, why would we sell the whole thing?
Because that's where we started, we started with the whole thing.
No, we've never, as a council, we've never agreed to.
No, we haven't, obviously, there's some hesitancy within the council on the entire large vision. I think that if we continue moving towards the large vision, we'll be able to slow it down or change direction, but if we're not moving forward, we're just waiting. And it's, this has been years in the making, getting to this point, I don't see why we would need to put the brakes on potential partnership opportunities that they can be seeking while this RFQ is out. There's other moving parts that we can be moving this project forward over the next few months. And to tell them, no, just concentrate on the demonstration project, that puts everything else, it slows everything down, and nothing's getting cheaper. And I think that this is the best use of our time and resources, is to tell them, continue, use their professional expertise to keep this moving forward, because we are confident in their abilities, we're confident that we're going to get a good RFQ, and this is going to move towards an eventual, really nice, fully worked-out project, and it's still a decade away. But every few months that we put them on hold now, that's like adding another year to the finished product.
Well, let's think.
No downside in telling them to continue, in my opinion.
So when we ask them to continue, we know what the next steps are. You rightly said, is we are coming to, I don't want to use words because it's a public thing, but we know what's coming next, so do we, are we?
Explain yourself, I'm not sure what you're saying.
I'm going to say.
I don't, I don't, I'm sorry.
I'm going to say, we will come, like, for more acquisitions, as simple as that. Okay, for five acres, 10 acres, 15 acres, are we ready for that?
I think we can do it, we're not obligated to that.
Okay, so that's a good question, that, okay, so that's a good question. Are you, are you thinking that if we move forward with the whole vision, that means we have to buy all the land over time? Is it?
That's what he's coming to.
No, no.
No, that's not where I'm going, and I don't, I didn't hear them say that either.
But that's what it will, like you said, this is the key.
No, no, our intent is not to buy any more land. Our intent is to let private development purchase the rest of the land. Now, that we, are there going to be opportunities where we might need to strategically purchase a parcel here or there? Maybe, but our intent is, from this point forward, to get as much private investment we'd acquire in the rest of the land.
And we would recoup those investments, if we do purchase more properties, by selling it to the developer for a market value, which is what we hope we pay for it.
I very much, now, I've been on council all these years that we've been purchasing this land. I didn't purchase, and I'm just going to talk about me, not about all you, whoever else was involved, and all the council members that were involved, but for me, I didn't purchase the land just so we would sit on it. I mean, I purchased the land so that we could develop a town center one day, and we would sell the land to whoever to build our vision. So here we are, and we own more than just the demonstration site. So I want them to go out and say, look, this council has a vision for this whole area, they own some more of this land, but we're, we want to start here, and tell us what you can do. I want them to be able to go do that.
Why don't you explain, what is your, the future vision is, what are the next steps? So that would at least make us understand.
So I think we have the vision established. I think you're trying to, now, what, how do we get there?
Yeah, so, so as we talk about what we would be doing, is in addition to working on the demonstration project, as we're selling the demonstration project to the private sector, we're also selling this larger vision of downtown, and we're saying that the local government here is committed to seeing this town center get built over time. They own some land, some land is privately owned, we're going to go out and try and find partners that are not interested, not only just interested in building the demonstration project, but also partners that will help build out the rest of this over time, with getting as much private investment as possible. And so we're, part of the reason why we're calling this a demonstration project, it's not just a demonstration that the market is there, that the private sector will be there, but it's also a demonstration, demonstration that the public sector is willing to work with the private sector to create this, this vision and to execute on this vision. And so we're going to be going out, trying to find partners, we're going to be giving you all much more detail on those next phases. So this demonstration project may be phase one, what's phase two? Where do we go next, in terms of what we think the market can absorb, what are the next investments that we think that the private sector can get excited about? Who are other potential partners that might come in and acquire that land? And then come back to you and say, hey, we've acquired the land, we like your vision, we'd like to build out these residential units and this retail space, are you willing to sell us some portion of your land that we need in order to fulfill that vision? You know, it's going to be a, we sort of see this as a public-private partnership opportunity, and so we just want to be able to go out and say, the town has said this is their vision, they're demonstrating that with the demonstration project, that they're already open to a public-private partnership, but now they're seeking partners that want to build, help them build this entire town center out over the next 10 years.
I just, a couple of clarifying questions, and I probably need some more time to think about this, but I'm trying to understand if we, what you just described, what more are we in for? Because what I, the pitfalls I see you doing is, you're going to go out and sell this, and you're going to say, they said they're going to do 1,400 apartments, and maybe that isn't the case. So, and I understand that, but are we, I'm more interested, I guess, is our vision's linking up, and that's going to take some time, but I think the demonstration project will help. Because I think if you get somebody to jump at that first, I'd be willing to say, okay, I'm working, you know, I'm not interested, though, in building parking decks. But I'd be interested in somebody building a park event and doing it a different way. I also would like to understand, then, if we pursue the long-term vision, are we in for more money, are we in for more? I would like to understand how much more we have to do, because I'm interested, it sounds like we're at the end of their contract, and I, and now we're negotiating to continue on or not, and that's what I'd like to.
So I'd like to just make two points, is the value of looking at the whole, is you control, I'll call it the destiny for what you want here, rather than individual developers coming in with their piece of a pie. So that's one of the values of looking at the broader vision. And I think as, not trying to speak for Michael, but the payment to the town is back in the investment that the private sector puts in, and the increased tax increment value. That's how we get recouped for our part of the public investment, and as he's talking about, the private sector's paying for our investment. We put some money in, and it gets returned to us in tax increment, and perhaps leases on parking decks, and some other structures like that. So that's, Michael, have I sort of clarified that correctly?
I think we can work that out later, but I'm trying to understand if we agree that this long-term vision, what are we in for more, how much more payment?
Sorry, go ahead. I mean, it's actually less, so if you agree to the second scenario, which is the larger vision, the contract stipulates that we'll take on these extra tasks as, and we'll get return on the private investment that takes place on the site, but less public.
What if that never happens? This return that you're asking about? I'm afraid your project's going to stall, to be honest.
It's our risk, I mean, if you're talking, if you're asking about our contract, ours is completely at risk. We're only going to get paid, if you ask us to move forward, we're only going to get paid if we're successful in attracting a private investment that's laid out.
But, but won't you at the same time blame us and say, well, we laid out this vision, and you're not, you're not agreeing to this vision that we laid out? And. Being perfectly honest, I wasn't aware of this, the parking deck, that's why they're here. That was there before, saying that the 1,400 apartments, I wasn't sure, I thought they were residential units, not apartments, by the way, that she was a single family. I'm just trying to say, I think there's, if you go around the table, everybody has a different concept that, I'm trying to help you guys, too, at the same time, I don't want to lead you down a path, we've been through this before with trademark, and you can't deliver. Can we take a 10-minute break, real quick? Is everyone okay with that? And then, Steve, did you want a final word before we take the break?
Yeah, just one final word. So what I'm hearing from you, though, is that if we did the long-term vision, you're taking the risk to go find, you'll get paid off of the development, so we're not really losing anything, we can still do the development project and pursue the long-term vision. To pick up on Council Guaramello's point, I think what he was trying to say, and it's also a concern in the back of, I think, all of our minds, is that let's say you go sell this, and you get the larger vision, and then you come back to council, and like he was saying, you say, you have to go, you know, out of the fund, buy this land, and buy this land, and buy this land. And I think that's just sort of, we don't, we just want to make sure that we're not obligated to that, but it seems to me like we're not, I mean, you're going to.
That would be our decision, if and when that happens.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify these points before we break, so. Well, I'm open to the vision, then.
If you don't mind, let's take a 10-minute break, we'll come back at 8:42. Thanks. I'd like to go ahead and call Spectrum Orders now, 8:46. We've been talking to DFI about strategies moving forward, our agreement with them, and how to proceed with that. An important part of that is tied into the next subject, which I want to turn over to Martha, and she's going to talk about what this might mean as far as funding, moving forward with some of these other options.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think that the point I want to illustrate quickly is, is there's some words on a page here, but it's really the concepts behind what I'm going to talk about that I want you to focus on, and it's really to demonstrate that if there would be the need for some public investment, either to attract that private investment, or to stimulate that private investment until some of those tax increments come forward, there is a pathway forward for us to do that. So I've used, again, the demonstration concept and costs to sort of demonstrate that. So if I could go through sort of all my pages, I think a lot of your questions might get answered before you might ask them. So on the first page, what we've tried to illustrate is, is that, thank you, Mayor. Todd's making me do this, so, no. As we talked about it, the library is the primary component, and to put the library on the site and locate it properly, we needed some preliminary work done, and you've made that decision already. We need to work on a location of a roundabout, we need to do some work to relocate a gas line, and we need to design a stormwater project. And there's a way with our current fund balance, and you'll see more on fund balance next week, but trust me, it's there, that we could take that $500,000 out of that and not damage our credit rating, or our debt capacity, or compromise any other project that you might want to consider, and we could activate that project. So no additional debt from those projects. Our next steps would be, we would need to construct that road, we would need to construct a stormwater project, and we would need to relocate a gas line. Now, for this purpose, we've just put in here what we anticipate through some estimates, what the total cost of the relocation would be, and we've just made a very conservative, we might have to pay for that upfront. Haven't had those conversations yet, but that's another initial $2.5 million investment before we would be able to put a library in place. And there are ways to pay for that. We will likely have fund balance there, or you could take a very short-term line of credit approach. A reminder that we do have other debt financing opportunities available to us outside of issuing bonds. Then there was that other component of the demonstration project cost, which, as illustrated, is a parking deck, but $12 million of investment. And you have options to finance that debt if necessary, and ultimately, as Eric and Mike have indicated, there would be some revenue streams in. For the purpose of this, I'm just sort of illustrating if we could afford that debt until some of those revenues came in. So that's just the layout of the money, and that roughly correlates to the $14.5 million you saw in DFI's presentation last week about what the public costs of the demonstration project would be. The next page shows you some debt projections for our currently existing debt, and some of the anticipated debt that we've talked about. So I'm going to run through that. That first line is our current debt, and that's everything we have outstanding already. So that's our public safety radios, that's the fire station, that's Church Street Park, that's the public safety municipal building, and that's just our annual debt service payments for the years that are illustrated. What we already know, we've got either current or coming, is McCrimmon Parkway, so that's 14.3, some of which is already in that current debt, and some of which will issue when we start phase two. We have $5.7 million in bonds that we plan on issuing related to an MAFC project, that you're going to hear about more next week. And then we have a projected initial outflow of money related to the Morrisville Carpenter Road project, remembering that we would have to upfront pay for the cost of that road, and we get repaid through some of that Cambo match. And so we've sort of incorporated, just fully conservative, that we would have that debt payment for a period of time. What this chart is intending to illustrate is, even with all of those debts planned and projected in the next couple of years, we are well below our debt capacity limits, and have the ability to fund those projects. Again, just sort of want to reemphasize, this is a worst-case scenario with some of those funds. It does not take into account that many of these projects are, have some monies coming back in, in particular, that LAP funding, if we'd get it from Morrisville Carpenter Road. The next page is just another illustration of that same information that shows with our projected expenditures, and what our current debt is, that there is still capacity in each of those years. And what we know from past presentations, and again, from here, is, is our, I'll call it tight years, are 19 and 20. That's when we have the most debt coming on board, and when it's highest, we have debt that starts to fall off in '21 and '22, that actually continues to add capacity to us. And this is, this is a calculation that we have to do every year, it's based on our expenditures, so as that number changes, so does our debt capacity ratio. So right now, we're forecasting, and then we validate that after we get annual fiscal year results each year. The next slide is intended to illustrate that if you wanted to go with a demonstration project scenario, or some public commitment of money to support a project in some component, what would be the impact of that on our, in particular, debt capacity? So with, with the $12 million that I previously showed you, indicating that some of those front monies would come out of fund balance, this chart is supposed to show you that we're still. of fund balance, this chart is supposed to show you that we're still under, we're close, but we're under our 15% debt capacity, particularly in 2019 and 2020. This just is a symbol, borrowing at 4% interest for a 20-year term, and that's roughly about $880,000 of annual payment a year. And again, it's really just designed to illustrate that we do have that capacity as council continues to discuss this project. So that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions about that. Other than that, I'll turn it over to Todd.
These scenarios you've laid out, are we talking about debt financing? If we're within debt capacity here, you're saying that we could fund some of these costs through just debt financing and things like that?
Yes. We've talked a little bit about this before. The town does have other ways to finance things other than bond issuance. We did an installment purchase for the public safety radios. As illustrated, these are very simple mortgages. Another option that could be pursued, especially for like a Morrisville Carpenter Road project, a line of credit that you're drawing down and paying back outside of equal payment terms. We wouldn't want to pursue any of those without talking to our financial advisors, other than to let you know that they are there for us to use.
And in the past, we've said that bonds, right? Any new bond, we couldn't issue until probably 2021, because if we did issue a new bond to do some of this stuff, we'd be probably exceed our capacity.
Well, general obligation bonds have to be approved by voters, and that's just a whole other timeline as well. You do have options to secure debt that isn't voter-approved.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to do is just go back to a couple of the decision points we talked about, and start with the first one, is DFI's role moving forward. So you know, we laid out, option one is to charge them with pursuing the full vision, or just focusing on the currently owned town road plan. We kind of talked about the factors for each one, and so I would open it up for your discussion and any direction you can provide on that.
You stated earlier that having them do the RFQ and go out and sell the greater vision is of no cost to the town, and they're paid back through development fees, or broker fees?
Development fees.
Development, okay.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Is everyone okay with having DFI continue then in that role?
Yes.
Okay.
Make it so.
So you got nods on that? Next subject.
Was that everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. And then the last decision point is with the library space. Based on the update here tonight, would you like the county to still pursue the space needs that have been requested? If the answer is yes, we just need to clarify, do you want to pursue within the 8,500 square feet that you had planned? Or would you like to consider adding space? And then the other option would be is that, based on what you've heard, you thank them for that opportunity, but we'll pursue our space needs in other ways.
But I think this, but they said that they don't know based on where the location is to even know to add or not to add, so.
Right, but what we're just asking for now is, do you want the county to continue exploring the option? And they will, they'll bring back more information, charge them with that. So you can make that final decision at a later point. Or have you heard enough to know that, again, while you appreciate the opportunity to consider, that you would rather pursue our space needs in other ways?
Can I get clarification that if we go outside of the 8,500 footprint, that would be our cost? Is that the intention, that we'd be paying for those extra square feet? And they would still have first right to that space, though? And how much more space would we want at $400 a square foot? Because we didn't really get into that.
You're right, we didn't get into that tonight, but I thought we had that discussion before. Didn't we have that discussion last time?
Before, I thought it was more of our own space augmenting the library, not additional space within their library. You know what I mean? Because there was thought that we couldn't be in that same building. There was some back and forth on that.
And that whole discussion has evolved from initially, we were considering own space, separate entrances, and then going through a visioning process, but we elected not to go through that. And then we asked, what if we just added space that would be operated and managed by the library? I certainly assumed that any additional space beyond the 8,500 square foot would be covered by the town, but maybe I assumed wrongly. So again, that might be another clarification point.
No, I think you had it right. I'm in favor of having, and I think I'm in the minority, but I'd be in favor of having them carving out a room for.
Within the 8,500?
Yes, for citizen use, not town use.
I would be in favor of letting the library design their 8,500 feet as best as they could. And if there's areas and times that we can use it, fine. If not, I think we have a number of other options for meeting space in this town right now, plus the possibility of future use in town center.
So I like the 8,500 square feet. I'm supporting Michael's idea of carving out the space. But again, we're probably in the minority, but I still want to support that.
Okay, well, I think the library folks know what they're doing, and I think I would let them design their 8,500 square feet that is the most successful for our residents. I think they have the experience and the knowledge to do that, and I'm fine with that.
I think I'm even more in the minority, that I think that we should have a separate entrance and dedicated space for the town. I think that would really get us some space in the town center now that's municipal, that could really give us a starting point so that we could do programming on Saturdays and Sundays in that space. But short of that, I think that we should let the library decide how they want to program and set up their 8,500 square feet.
Attention, Steve?
I'm for the 8,500. If we need more space, then I'm for the, like, 12 by 12, that we pay for that 12 by 12 or something, but not shrink into our, their 8,500, because they need their space, because that's their puppy, and they know what they need to do, because we should not get into their space. If we need an interest, then we pay for our 12 by 12, or 10 by 10, or 500 square feet. But that's, we should not interfere into their space.
Yeah, I'm fine with the 8,500, but I, you know, I am concerned that we don't, I think just based on what I've heard from staff, we have, we don't have as much space for programming. So I think it's just, but, you know, hopefully we can make this happen. They can maximize their experience and give us the best use of the 8,500, look at our options down the road.
I guess, okay. I'll just add, whatever the library does as far as programming will be more than we have today. And it will take up some of the programming needs, I think. Not exactly one for one, but I think it will, okay. So I think the council would like the library to take their 8,500 square feet and design it the best they can.
I'm clear on that. We can continue space need discussions separately. You still have options as a demonstration project would come forward, and we can explore other viable uses of space in town facilities and continue that discussion separately.
Let me just thank you for the direction you've given tonight. Staff looks forward to giving you updates on this project. And certainly open it up now, if you have any additional questions you have tonight, we're happy to answer it. Otherwise, we will move on in the work session.
Okay. Were there any other discussion topics, Martha?
Now, I think that Todd and I will work with Eric and Michael to put together some more comprehensive, now, I think, timelines and nuts and bolts, and more step-by-step detailed process that'll help you understand, engage, what's going on from this vision process. That'll be helpful to future discussions.
Okay. Can I just, I need to go on the record as saying, I know the financing that we just looked at included $12 million of public financing for parking deck. And as I said on the outset, I want to be open to other options for that solution, so.
I think you could probably say that for all seven of us.
All right, just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's not a goal to fully fund.
Somebody will pick up this.
And I think that what we can do, Mayor, in particular for the version that we put out on the website, I think we, your point is well-taken. I think we can go in and put some, I'll call it some disclaimer comments, so that future readers know that this was not a policy document, an approved document, but it was a discussion document, and that you need to get the context of council's discussion through minutes and records, and that might help alleviate some of your concerns that way.
Thank you.
Okay.
Statements of like the tax increments and how it's sort of, there is a return on investment as well in this whole thing. So that's kind of the goal, is that eventually we are made whole. We front a lot of money, it's like any kind of grant that we do.
I don't know if that was all in that presentation, that part of it. I agree that that's a piece of it, but I don't know that that was spelled out necessarily. We didn't see anything about payback or anything else, so.
That's correct. I did not include that. You're correct. And the other thing that staff will, as we sort of launch into this next step, and one of the things we've talked about before, communicating the vision and what council is uniting behind, needs communicated. And we will put some resources to that to help support your efforts to do that as you speak to constituents, et cetera.
Okay. All right. I want to thank you, everyone, for their time tonight that came in. Library folks, thank you. DFI, thank you very much. Staff, we're about to go into closed session. I'm going to let Steve Brown read that preamble.
Pursuant to North Carolina statute 143.318.1186, I move to go into closed session to discuss a personnel matter.
Right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're in closed session now. We'll let the audience clear out.